Welcome to the October 11th, 2021, Twalton City Council Meeting, which is following today on the first official state holiday of Indigenous Peoples' Day. Councilor Sacco will have more words to describe the holiday in a few moments. But we'll go ahead and start off our meeting with a pledge allegiance led by Councilor Sacco.
Thank you, Mayor. If everyone can place their right hand over their heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now up is our moment of silence for those who have lost their lives to COVID-19 led by Councilor Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. For today's update, in the United States, so far, forty-four point three million people have gotten COVID, contracted COVID, with thirty-seven percent of those folks having long-range COVID symptoms. And even people with mild COVID can have scarring on their heart. And also, we talk about mental health illnesses like anxiety, depression, and PTSD for many of those who were hospitalized and released. Seven hundred and fourteen thousand people in our country have died of COVID, and there've been nearly four thousand, three thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine deaths here in Oregon. Here in Oregon, we're still only at seven percent of both of our ICU and nine ICU non-I-CU beds. And just a reminder that we know that wearing masks and getting our vaccines are two of the best preventions for COVID. With those numbers in mind and with those people that have lost loved ones, and for those that are still suffering, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. As I mentioned, today is the first official celebration of Indigenous Peoples' Day here in Oregon. And Councilor Sacco will take a few minutes to reflect upon this new holiday.
Thank you, Mayor. So earlier this year, Oregon lawmakers overwhelmingly passed House Bill 2526, making today, which is the second Monday in October, Indigenous Peoples' Day. The effort was led by our state's only Native American or Indigenous legislators, Representative Tana Sanchez of Northeast Portland, and Representative Teresa Alonso Leon of Woodburn. Today, we recognize and honor the Indigenous peoples of this land and their tremendous contributions to the state's history and culture. Oregon is home to nine federally recognized tribes, and today, approximately three percent of Oregon's population identify as American Indian or Alaska Native. Celebrations of Native and Indigenous history and cultures took place across the state today. And if you didn't get a chance to partake in today's events, there are lots of ongoing opportunities to learn more about the Indigenous people of this land. And here are a few. The Architectural Heritage Center in Portland is featuring an exhibit of Indigenous art in partnership with the Indigenous Marketplace through December 24. The Portland Art Museum has a collection of Native art that consists of thirty-five hundred artifacts created by approximately two hundred cultures from across North America. And the Tuolaton Library has many books available to expand your knowledge on this topic. The Oregon Indians' Voices from Two Centuries and The First Oregonians are two books I personally recommend and are both currently available at the Tuolaton Library. And I recognize this is a very small list of the vast educational opportunities that are available, but I wanted to take this time to encourage everyone to explore the Indigenous communities and cultures that make up this great region as we recognize our first Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Sacco. Moving on to announcements, we have your proclamation declaring October 2021 as National Long-Term Care Residents' Rights Month in the city of Twalton. And this proclamation will be read by Councilor Pratt.
The clearing in October 2021 is National Long-Term Care Residents' Rights Month in the city of Twalton. Whereas there are 1.3 million individuals living in fifteen thousand six hundred nursing homes and over eight hundred thousand individuals living in twenty-eight thousand nine hundred assisted living residential care facilities in the U.S. And whereas in Twalton, there are approximately fifty-five individuals living in one nursing home and approximately four hundred individuals living in five assisted living residential care facilities. And whereas the National Federal Nursing Home Reform Act of 1987 guarantees residents their individual rights in order to promote and maintain their dignity and autonomy. And whereas all residents should be aware of their rights so they may be empowered to live with dignity and with self-determination. And whereas we wish to honor and celebrate these residents, to recognize their rich individuality and to reaffirm their right to vote and participate politically, including the right to have a say in their care. And whereas individuals and groups across the countries will be celebrating Residents' Rights Month with the theme "Reclaiming My Rights, My Home, My Life", to highlight the need for residents' rights to be recognized, recovered, and reasserted. The theme emphasizes the recognition of the long-term care facility as the resident's home and the importance of residents reclaiming their own lives. Now, therefore, the city of Twalton does hereby proclaim October 2021 as National Long-Term Care Residents' Rights Month in the city of Twalton and encourages all community members to join these important observances. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the 12th City Council does hereby proclaim October 2021 is National Long-Term Care Residents' Rights Month in the city of Twalton and encourages the entire community to join in these important observances.
Right. Thank you. All right. That brings us to public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in the Zoom meeting who would like to address the council or at the Poll Center, this would be an appropriate time. Bates, do we have anyone at the Poll Center?
No one at the Poll Center, Mayor. There's only one member of the public, and I have not heard from them on Zoom itself.
Okay. So this is your opportunity, if you'd like to address council for public comment. All right. Seeing none, I'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda, the consent agenda, our items are considered routine. They'll be adopted by one motion unless someone in council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of item number one, consideration of approval of the work session in regular meeting minutes of September 27, 2021. Item two, consideration of approval of a change in liquor license application for Boone Starry Chevron. Item number three, consideration of resolution number 5567-21, awarding the contract for the Montezzi sanitary sewer truck line upsalting project to Icon Construction and Development and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract. Item number four, consideration of resolution number 5570-21, awarding a contract for the purchase of body-worn cameras, tasers, digital evidence storage, maintenance, and support. Item number five, consideration of resolution number 5571-21, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract amendment with Wallace Engineering for professional engineering and related services for the Garden Corner Curves project. Item number six, consideration of resolution number 5572-21, awarding fiscal year 2021, '22 outside agency grant funds to provide services to the Tualton community. And finally, item number seven, consideration of resolution number 5573-21, authorizing the purchase of storage area network equipment, design, materials, and installation. Would anyone like any of these items removed from consent and heard separately later tonight? I gave a heads-up during work session, I'm asking you have item number four, resolution 5570-21, remove from consent. Are there any other items that the council would like removed from consent? All right. So I have a motion to adopt the other six items.
I'll make a motion to adopt the six, other six items on the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt the six remaining items on the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motions? Council Hillier?
Aye.
Council Sacco?
Aye.
Council Brooks?
Aye.
Council Pratt?
Aye.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
And Council President Grimes?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye also. That brings us to items removed from consent. So I've asked Chief of Police, Bill Steele, to just briefly go over what's incorporated as part of this contract. As people know, we're very supportive and the community is very supportive of having our police officers wear cameras during national night out. When I talk to our officers, they're also very excited to have the cameras. So I just want folks to hear a little bit about what's involved and who are awarding the project to, the contract to. And what I found interesting was the tie between the cameras and the tasers. And I don't want to take away the cool stuff that Chief will talk about, but take away Chief on how these two are integrated together.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I appreciate a few minutes of your time to kind of explain this very important issue that we put on the agenda tonight or asked you to consider. Yeah, body worn cameras, it's a technology that we've been watching evolve over the last seven or eight years. Actually, I think the first demonstration I got from a vendor was back in about 2009. But it's really changed all over the years, and we really feel it's at a point now where it's a piece of technology and it's a resource and a tool that it's time to implement that in our city. The body worn cameras, again, you know, going back to kind of our guiding principles on this project, it's really to improve the accountability and the transparency for our community, strengthen that community trust and the relationships that we already have in place, promote officer safety, and really give us an opportunity to de-escalate more situations that our officers face every single day. And then really just enhance the quality of the investigations our officers are doing and help them gather the evidence needed to investigate the cases that they are faced with. So there is a connection between the body worn cameras and the tasers. Tasers are a piece of technology that have been around since the late 90s in law enforcement. The Tuolton Police Department began carrying tasers around the early 2000s, and then about fifteen years ago, we began individually assigning them to officers. It again is a piece of technology that has evolved a lot over the last twenty-plus years. They're deployed about four million times since the late 90s by police officers. It is what we consider a less lethal option. It's not a non-lethal option. So much of what we do has an amount of risk to it. In a perfect world, we would be able to eliminate all risk we face, but that's not necessarily the case. So we do our best to minimize that risk and control it as best we can. The taser gives us an opportunity to deal with a situation. And it's not a situation where we're just using a taser on somebody that's walking down the street or driving a vehicle that's been stopped on a traffic stop. A taser is deployed in a situation where the individuals we're dealing with are very violent or potentially to be very violent with either officers or putting a community member in harm's way. So it's an important piece of equipment that we rely on to get our jobs done safely. Fortunately, we don't have to use them a lot. In 2020, we utilized the taser three times. That's out of the literally tens of thousands of contacts we have with our community members every single year. It was three times in 2019 and six times in 2018. So it's a tool that we need to have available to us. But again, fortunately, we're not using it every single day. There's a lot of decisions that go into the use of a taser. And when you're going to deploy a taser, we always give a verbal warning, if possible, to give people an opportunity to comply before the taser is being used upon them. We factor in a person's age, we will not use the taser if possible against somebody that's pregnant, elderly, juveniles, you know, situations like that. We don't want to make a situation any worse by utilizing the taser. But it's pretty much an acceptable and accepted common tool that police officers are equipped with these days. The advantage of going with the company that we've proposed with Axon is they are the ones that have developed taser technology in the late 90s, and they've now evolved into the use of body cameras. And this platform is tied together in a number of different ways. The technology allows us to, when an officer is wearing a body camera, there is a sensor that is located not only on the taser holster, but also on their firearm holster. So if they find themselves in a situation where they're dealing with somebody and their camera for some reason at that point is not activated, if they were to draw their handgun or their taser, it will automatically not only activate their camera, it will activate any other cameras that are in a short distance away from that officer. So it provides some seamless coverage there, utilizing the technology that is built into those platforms. So they're pretty important pieces of technology, again, that have really evolved over the years. And I'm comfortable being where we are today and taking that next step to implement the camera use, the tasers, again, we've been using for pushing twenty years now. Going back to our community conversations, use of force, this was the topic we discussed. We were having conversations with our community that this was kind of the direction we were going. We spent some time getting a solid policy in place that is built on best practices. We opened that up to community feedback as well. And now is just really the right time to make this step. So that is kind of just a generic little spiel of our body worn cameras and tasers, but I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have about either piece of equipment. And I'll do my best to answer them.
Thanks, Chief. As I mentioned in work session, the reason I pulled this was just to give Chief an opportunity to, you know, basically tell the community about how this program, you know, how the hardware works and the advantages of it and how it's integrated into the officer's pistol and the taser and the, you know, really nice feature that if the cameras are turned off, they will automatically be turned on. And what was really cool is the officers around them, those cameras will be turned on also. And that Chief still didn't mention the vendor who the city's going with has been recommended by the League of Oregon Cities. I believe the cities around us use the same vendor, correct, Chief?
That is correct. So everybody in our county, in Washington County, is utilizing Axon, except for Washington County, they use a different vendor. Forest Grove had a different vendor a couple of years ago, and I think they've switched over to Axon now as well. So they've kind of got a good niche in the market for providing the best piece of equipment and technology in this profession.
So it's kind of, as we're going with a solid choice that has been recommended by the League of Oregon Cities and being used by other cities who've already deployed it and know that this vendor is reliable. So any questions for Chief? Whoa, lots of hands. So Council Sacco, Council Brooks, and Council President Grimes.
Not a question, just a statement. I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time to be here this evening. And two things that you said that really resonated with me, that makes me, you know, gives me another reason to be proud to be part of this community is that the police department's doing this for accountability and to build trust. And I think that that really resonates with our community. And again, this makes me very proud of our police department and all the good work that you're doing for our community, and I just wanted to take the time to say thank you.
We appreciate that. We try to be an open book. Anytime somebody has a question really about anything that we're doing, we want to take the time to provide information, to kind of explain the thought process behind what we do in our profession.
Council Brooks?
I too want to thank you, Mayor, and Chief Steele for providing the opportunity to talk a little bit more about it. I have the good fortune of serving on the Tualton Community Police Foundation along with Councilor Pratt. And so I've heard more about, you know, it's quite an investment that we're making and the fact that I just appreciate your leadership in showing patients, waiting till the technology is been kind of fleshed out and so that we really get a good product for our investment and the bugs have been worked out and you know, showing patience at the same time of moving forward with with more, building more community trust and safety for both the community and the police officers themselves. So just a big thank you, Chief.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Council President Grimes?
Thank you. As you know, I've always been a huge supporter of our police department and our chief. And I think that we have some world-class officers and public servants that work in our police department. But I was hoping that you could speak to the way that the contract is structured. It's a multi-year payment, and part of that, if I remember correctly, has to do with the ability to cycle in and out technology so that we're able to keep up with technological advances and we're not limited to a one-time purchase. Could you kind of speak to that? Because I thought that was an interesting thoughtful part of the contract.
Yeah, and really that is one of the main reasons we involved the purchase of tasers in with this contract as well. Again, we've been using tasers for many years. But the technology evolves, and we want to make sure our officers have the best possible equipment. And it also is an advantage to our department to have everybody on the same type of platform. So, for example, my taser is a little bit different than what the officers carry. It's older technology that doesn't do some of the things that the newer tasers do. My taser, for example, if I was to, you know, display it and potentially use it on somebody, it puts a single dot on a person, and that doesn't give a clear indication of where the two darts that will come out of the taser will land. There's only one red dot pointed at a person. The new tasers, for example, have two red dots, so you know exactly where the two probes are going to be deployed to. And that's important because when we train our officers and our policy dictates this as well, we want to avoid the face, the neck, the chest area, the groin area. And it really, you know, helps further where those probes are going to be deployed to, which minimizes the potential for injury to the person. So it's important that we have that option. And so, yes, this contract is over a five-year period. So as their technology potentially changes, we will get the newer versions of that equipment as it's released.
That, Council, does that answer your question, Council President? Okay. Council Reyes?
I just want to address a little bit of cameras. I think it's really important for our officers to be out there, and the cameras will be transparency. So we're, I'm often worried that, you know, our officers might get in trouble or anything like that. So having those cameras is really important, and so I support that for transparency purposes. And also, you know, I know that also praise the good work you guys do out there. And that's a way of seeing through the camera. So thank you.
You know, one thing I would like to add real quick on that piece is, you know, we have some parameters that we're working within when it comes to, you know, even state statute about, I don't want to have the public have this perception that if they are pulled over by a police officer on a traffic stop, that video is suddenly going to show up on YouTube. That's not going to be the case. There's a lot of privacy built into the state law and our policies as well that if they were ever to be released, the faces of all parties involved, they're blurred out. We have specific guidelines established in the state statute now about when those videos would be released. There's timeframes for how long we're going to retain that video. So a lot of that is, there's been a lot of thought put into that. So I just want to make sure people are aware that we're thinking about things like that, not only at the local level, but at the state level as well.
That's really good to know, Chief, because, yeah, that's another, that's a good point of confidentiality as well and keeping people safe, private, also have that private life that they desire. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution 5570-21?
Motion that we adopt resolution number 5570-21.
Second?
I have a motion, a second, to adopt resolution number 5570-21. Council Hillier?
Aye.
Council Sacco?
Aye.
Council Brooks?
Aye.
Council Pratt?
Aye.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council President Grimes?
Aye.
I vote aye also. So unanimous. Thank you.
Sorry, you know, the mayor asked me to talk until 10 o'clock, and I didn't quite make it. And so...
Yeah. Yeah, sure I did. Thank you, Chief. I very much appreciate taking time out tonight to discuss it. But I think it's an important item for our community. It's a little bit of a change. It's a positive change, and we just want people to be very educated on what's rolling out into their community. With that, we're up to council communications. Any additional communications? Council Hillier, then Council Pratt, oh, Council Sacco, Council Brooks. So Council Hillier first.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to encourage everyone listening to go to your cupboards and your medicine cabinet and where you keep your vitamins and all that sort of thing, and bring them all out, sort through them, and make sure if you're using them, that you're using them properly. If they're expired, you need to get out a giant bag or a baggie or however much you have and join the Tualton Police Department in partnership with Tualton together for a prescription drug take-back day or a drug take-back day on October the 23rd from, I believe, nine to one. Chief, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but acceptable items for return are prescription medications, samples, all-over-the-counter medications, vitamins, pet medications, creams, and ointments. It is not suitable for thermometers, syringes, IV bags, biowaste, aerosols of any type, inhalers, EpiPens, or liquid medications. Though we're really trying to work on a Sharps sort of thing. So anyway, it's National DEA Drug Take-Back Day, so I'd encourage you to swing through, no questions asked, you drop it off and get a goodie. So see you Saturday, the 23rd.
Thank you. Council Pratt?
I just wanted to let everybody know, I'm sure you probably seen on the news, but due mainly to the COVID Delta variant, blood donations have been down the last few months. So there's a real need, critical need for blood donations. And it's very easy, you can go to redcrossblood.org and it pops up at the donation thing, and you put in your zip code, and they tell you where there's drives near you, or bloodworksnorthwest.org, and click on the donation button.
Thank you. Council Sacco?
Thank you. So a couple fun fall events going on in Tualton right now. For those of you who don't know, the Tualton Pumpkin Hunt is in full swing in the Tualton Parks, and it runs through the end of October. Little pumpkin fairies are hiding 250 pumpkins throughout the parks, and there's going to be some special golden pumpkins. So I encourage everybody to get out into the parks and take the little ones out to go hunt for some pumpkins. I think it's a great event to get out there and the sun's still shining and take a nice, crisp fall walk. And there's also the Shrunken Regatta, which is so creative and what a cute name, where kids can pick up a pumpkin coloring kit from the library and turn it in by the 14th. So there's only a few more days to turn in your pumpkins, and you can be entered in for a $25 Visa gift card drawing. So lots of fall fun activities.
Thank you. Council Brooks?
There we go. Thanks. First, I want to say that There we go. Thanks. First, I want to say that I am really proud and happy that Tuolton Sustainability Network and the city are coming together for a Hug the Street litter blitz, which will be on Saturday, November 6, from 9 to 12 at Tuolton Community Park. It'll be outdoors and, but you still want to bring your masks and tools, gloves, guidance, maps, and snacks will be provided. So, and Jackie wrote out a really sweet thing, "Put on your walking shoes and scour the community for litter." We've done this before and it's a lot of, it's a fun way of getting out into the community with each other in a safe way to make the area nice. And the other thing I want to bring up is October around Domestic Violence Awareness Month, our local Moms Demand Action volunteers are working with Clackamas Women's Services. There's a big connection between gun violence and domestic violence. And there's a donation drive for toothpaste, toothbrushes for kids and adults, kid shampoo, hair care, baby shampoo and conditioner, kids' art supplies, deodorant, body wash and soap, feminine hygiene products. Collection dates are through October 15 through the 26th. And here, our local nurse extraordinaire and major volunteer, Terry Mills, is taking donations at her place, 20564 Southwest 98th Court in Tuolton. And she has a drop-off box located at the front door. So if you have any more questions about that, you can always give me an email at my city email and I'll give you that information again. Thanks. Nice seeing everybody.
All right. Anything else? All right. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
I moved. That's it.
Motion, a second, to adjourn. All those who favor, just raise your hand and say aye. All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a very good evening and enjoy the good weather while we have it. Find those pumpkins. Have a terrific evening. Bye-bye.